All right, good evening again, one I've got to tell everyone to the November 18, 2014 meeting of the Whitehall City Council for approval of such a meeting. Can you come forward? I'm going to ask everyone to please rise for their moment of silence and then remain standing for the place. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Churchman, please call and roll.
Morrison, Bailey, Rodriguez, Gray.
Here.
Coniston.
Here.
Kanter.
Present.
LeCourt.
Present.
And President Grant. Present. Mr. President, move to excuse the absent members. Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Kanter, through excuse the absent members. Churchman, please call and roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Kanter.
Yes.
LeCourt.
Yes.
The absent members have been excused. Next we have our approval of minutes from November 4, 2014, the agenda and regular meeting.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes on November 4. Second?
A motion by Ms. Coniston and a second by Mr. LeCourt for the approval of the November 4, 2014 minutes. Churchman, please call and roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Kanter.
Yes.
LeCourt.
Yes.
The minutes stand approved. Now at this time, we're going to deviate from our normal agenda and we're going to deal with Resolution 49214. All right, we're going to have that. All right. All right, now recognizing the fact that Jerry Brooks for his heartfelt dedication to the city of Whitehall.
Mr. President, I have to introduce Resolution 49214 and your first adoption.
Second. A motion by Mr. LeCourt, a second by Mr. Kanter for adoption of Resolution 49214. Questions or comments? Ms. Churchman, please call and roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Kanter.
Yes.
LeCourt.
Yes.
Resolution 49214 has been adopted. And at this time, I'm going to have Mr. LeCourt please step forward and ask for Jerry Brooks to come up.
Jerry Brooks. I didn't plan this, but I tell you, this is like the best time of the year to be recognizing somebody like Jerry that is very dedicated to our community, giving, never, we've never ever had to call him and ask him to show up at something, he's just always there. We can always count on him for our Christmas with the, um, presents with Santa, decorate some truck, drive it through our city, his purse on Halloween. I don't know a day that, I was thinking back years ago, as I stood on Early Road with my two little children and the grades, um, back then in those days, Jerry was there. Um, my son's eyes would light up with the old fashioned fire truck and all of that. And, um, going when my daughter played soccer, seeing Jerry there years ago, my daughter's 30, my son's 33. So, just through all of this, I just felt like this was a great time, it's Thanksgiving, we're thankful to have such a great resident as Jerry that again, never has to be asked, it's just an automatic, it's never not in his thought process to want to put the kids' eyes wide open with wow. And, um, so, if I could get through this without crying, I think I'll do good. So, Jerry, today we are recognizing and thanking you for your heartfelt dedication to the city of Whitehall, whereas it is the pleasure of this council to express its appreciation to an individual, to the individual and organizations that have been of great service to our community. And whereas council is aware that Jerry Brooks has consistently and unselfishly given of, unselfishly given up his personal time to make holidays special for the children of Whitehall and more enjoyable for all of our citizens. And whereas Jerry has exhibited his unconditional love for the city, its children and citizens for over 25 years, inspiring them with the hometown pride. And whereas Jerry, um, has mentored and coached the city's children with the pride that is in his heart for, for Whitehall. Now there as be it resolved by the Council of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, that the Council of the City of Whitehall personally and collectively on behalf of the city government and the citizens of the city hereby expresses its appreciation to Jerry Brooks for his consistent and dedicated service to the city of Whitehall as exhibited through his work for the children and the citizens of the community. This resolution shall go into effect today, November the 18th, 2014. Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, I'm kind of beside myself on this recognition. Uh, when she talked to me a few weeks back about being here, I was surprised, there's a lot of people out there deserve this too, that, I mean, I do because I love to want to, I mean, it's just, just the way it is, you gotta bring the spirit in for all the holidays. I'd like to thank my parents because obviously they did something right, bringing me up. And my girlfriend being here to share this, and actually the fire department here too, glad they showed up. I appreciate that. I'm like, surprised. I will definitely hang this up on my wall.
Well, you want me to buy the frame, I would be more than happy. I have my dad's hanging in my house, so.
Well, actually, now that she mentioned her dad, the reason I've been doing the soccer is because her dad, at the age of 15, he handed me a folder and said, "Here." I said, "What's this?" And he says, "Your coaching, you soccer team." So I was coaching kids that were only three years younger than me, but I've been with it for, well, honestly 10 years, but 30 some years now, so, so I appreciate it.
You definitely have changed, you know, like I said, Thanksgiving, we're thankful for you, the city, you make a difference, I mean, you truly do, and you're just an outstanding citizen, and what more can we say? This is probably way past Thanksgiving. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, that brings us to our State Committee Reports. General Administration and Financial Management, your first one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management did meet last week, our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next week, sometime after 6:30. I want to remind you, remember the council reviews 2015 appropriations, and if you have any questions, feel free to call the mayor, anybody from the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to Community Engagement, your first one, Coniston.
Thank you, President Grant. Community Engagement, last week, our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next week, sometime after 6:30. Some of our numbers are announced over reviews in 2015 appropriations, and if you have any questions, feel free to call the mayor, anybody from the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to Community Engagement, your first one, Coniston.
Thank you, President Grant. Community Engagement, last week, our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next week, sometime after 6:30.
Uh, that, we're now at Community Standards and Enforcement. That Sheriff, of course, Rodriguez is unable to attend the meeting this evening. However, uh, that committee did meet last Tuesday, their minutes are on file, and they do have a couple pieces of legislation coming out this evening. Next we have Economic Development, Sheriff Person LeCorte.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic and Development, we also met last week, our minutes are on file, we will meet again next week sometime after 6:30.
All right. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Sheriff Person Grant.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure Maintenance also met last, uh, week, and our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again back next week, sometime after 6:30.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, that brings us to Public Safety, Sheriff Person Morrison, he is, uh, a little under the weather this evening, and also is unable to attend the meeting. Uh, Public Safety did meet last week, they had some discussion on some, uh, a few things, uh, mostly parking around the schools, uh, or picking up children around the school to stay in the park. Uh, and their minutes are on file, and they'll meet again next Tuesday, sometime after 6:30. Next we have Parks and Recreation, Sheriff Person Kanter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation, that last week, their minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next week, sometime after 6:30.
That brings us to our Officials Reports, uh, and we shall start this evening as usual with Governor.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations, Jerry, well deserved. Uh, I would just like to let council and everyone out there know that we need some patching on Hamilton Road, uh, finish that this past week. Uh, just trying to get it really get through until, uh, spring and summer, and we need state funding to help us redo that new stretch there. So we are very cognizant that roads in bad shape, but, um, also very cognizant of our dollars and the fact that, um, it's very hard to do this type of work in this type of weather, and anything that we can do would be money out of our pocket if we did the whole thing because we can get it done with state aid next year. So we did go in and patch some of those, uh, really bad stretches. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Next we have our Interim Director of Public Service, Zach Wood.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the mayor mentioned, uh, we completed the Hamilton Road, uh, patching, uh, this past week, uh, to get us through the season. Um, there were questions from members of council about the, uh, Main Street Bridge over Big Walnut at our committee meeting, uh, wanted to let you know that I did follow up with ODOT. Uh, that bridge is scheduled to be replaced in 2015, the entire bridge, um, so that will begin in the spring and then should be completed by October of next year. So I know council members had questions about, uh, I think the sidewalks as an example, but the entire bridge is scheduled to be, uh, replaced, uh, next year. Obviously, as we are well aware, the first snowfall fell on Monday, uh, right in the middle of leafing season, so we are, uh, doing both, uh, right now. Uh, so you may have seen one or two of our trucks driving around with the, uh, uh, leaf collection, uh, bin in the back while they were simultaneously plowing, we call them multitasking. Uh, but, uh, we will continue to monitor our saw usage as the, uh, where no doubt it'll lean upon us, so, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Next we have our Auditor, Mr., I mean, I'm sorry, City Attorney, Mike Shannon.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council. I have no official report this evening. I would note that, uh, we had quite a large docket today in, um, Mayor's Court, and there were several what we call frequent flyers, and we received numerous compliments on the new courtroom, um, for what it's worth. Has a much more homey feeling than the last one, and they'll be sure to see me again sometime soon. So, but we did actually have several people that came into the back office that, "Man, this person was really great." Well, we'd like to see you less, but thanks for the compliments, so, but at least somebody's noticing. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, next we have, now we have our Auditor.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, members of council. I have no official report tonight, and would like to ask for favorable consideration on ordinancees 74, 85, 86, and 87. Thank you.
All right. That brings us to our Director of Development, Mr. Zach Wood.
President, we're gonna call me twice each time, okay. I have no official report, uh, as a development attorney, but Jerry, I too want to congratulate you, uh, on, uh, the resolution. I too can remember, uh, being in soccer league, uh, as a youth, uh, with you there, so congratulations, and I'd be real nice if I didn't say that. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. The following officials reports have been filed in the council office. We have the Treasurer's Investment Report for October 2014, the Treasurer's Fund of Exercitation, the report for October 2014, the Treasurer's Activity by Fund Report for October 2014. Hope we'll, we'll do this soon, so I do this. Uh, the Auditor's Month-to-Day, Near-to-Day Expense Report as of October 31, 2014, the Auditor's Year-to-Date Statement of Cash Report as of October 31, 2014, the Auditor's Month-to-Day, Near-to-Day Bank Report as of October 31, 2014. We also have the Auditor's Month-to-Day, Near-to-Day Revenue Report as of October 31, 2013, and the Fire Department's Report of Overtime Work for the Month of October 2014. Before we move on to Communications and Positions and Claims, for everybody out there, I'm kind of dealing with something new up there, so, uh, I miss the full public, we're gonna do full public now, uh, so I'm gonna open full public, and, uh, if anyone would like, uh, we do have someone here from, uh, Kiwanis, Kay Schaefer. Please come forward, can you name an address for the record? And...
My name is Kay Schaefer, and my address is, um, um, Barbary, Barbary Lane, Cliffs Isle, 43213. And this is, um, Charlie La Riviera. Anyway, we're here, uh, for several reasons. Um, we used to do quite a few, um, projects for the seniors, um, we used to work with the Pride of Whitehall, um, and help clean up, uh, paint whatever needed to be done for some of the seniors. So we're here, again, to let you know that we're available to do those kinds of projects. Uh, we're also here because we want a little support from Whitehall as well, some of the businesses, um, to become members, um, Charlie's gonna speak about that.
Yes, we, our group is about, Kiwanis is about 20 members, 25 members right now, and some of our members are actually outside of Whitehall that are coming into Whitehall to help, to give back to the communities that we might have grew up here, have been around here. We'd really like to see a growth of Whitehall people coming to the club because they're more in tune with the community. You know, like I said, we have outside Whitehall people coming, and, you know, we work over at the spaghetti dinner at the VFW once a year, uh, we do a lot of projects, and we'd like to continue doing that, but we'd love to have, love to have the community support, maybe some council members coming, you don't have to join right away, come and see how things are, and bring a friend.
And our main thing is we help children and the elderly, that's kind of what Kiwanis is all about. Our, um, international project is, um, to wipe out tetanus. So we are in the, what's called our eliminate project, and what we're doing is we're providing shots, it's three shots, um, for women in third world countries, um, to wipe out so that while they're with child, they get these three shot, three shots, and then their children won't have tetanus. I don't know if you know about tetanus, but when the children are born, they can't touch them for seven days because they just scream. So, and a lot of, of course, a lot of babies die. So we were, um, back in the early 90s, mid 90s, uh, we were partnering up with Morton Salt, and we, um, wiped out iodine deficiency, um, in third world countries. So that's kind of what we're all about internationally, but we want to be all about locally. So that's why we're here, so.
Part of, part of our local effort is we do have a key club. Key Club is the high school members. We do have a growing key club at Whitehall High School, and we, you know, when the kids are doing it and the parents are doing it, it creates a cycle. We all know about cycles, the poverty and everything, let's get the cycles of community service. It's a great effort, my kids have done it, hopefully y'all kids are doing it, get them involved, it's a great program.
And where are your meetings held?
Our meetings are Wednesday at 7:00 PM at the VFW Hall off of Main Street, right down the street.
Is that every Wednesday?
Every Wednesday but the 4th Wednesday.
Third.
Third Wednesday, every Wednesday but the 3rd Wednesday.
So we mean 1st, 2nd, and 4th.
Yes.
All right.
Come and just sit down and introduce and enjoy.
Hang out with us, yeah, hang out with us, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could just say a couple of words about Kiwanis, um, one of the big projects that they do every year is they go down to the Ronald McDonald House, um, at National Children's Hospital and serve Thanksgiving dinner to the children and the families of, um, the patients who are staying there. And so, um, the city is helping out with a, a food drive this year, there's a box that's in our lobby as well as one at the senior center, and we are collecting food so they can, um, have donations to prepare the meal. Um, they're gonna be serving about 100 people, you said?
100.
For dinner on Thanksgiving Day, um, so we're collecting food through Monday, and, um, they also are generously, uh, participating in the Pride of Whitehall's, um, community Christmas program again this year.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to take this opportunity to, uh, take advantage of the full public? Okay, um, we'll move on then, resume our, uh, normal agenda, that brings us to Communications, Positions, and Claims. We do have two items listed on the agenda, and we've also received, uh, some additional items, and we have, uh, a notice from the Ohio Division of Liquid Control of the application for transfer of location of the C1, C2, and D6 permits of Walgreen Company, DVA Walgreens, 12595, 4775, West Broad Street, Prairie Township, oh, okay, so that's the zip code again. 12595, and the address of 4775 West Broad Street, Prairie Township, Columbus, Ohio, 43228, to Walgreen Company, DVA Walgreens. Store number 07, I'll figure this out, it doesn't say, but that's what it is. 07942, located at 4617 East Main Street, uh, Whitehall, Ohio, 43213. We also have a notice from Division of Liquid Control that all permits in, uh, in Whitehall expire on February 1, 2015, and explaining two procedures regarding the right to object the renewal of a permit. Those are all the communications and petitions and claims we have, that brings us to our public hearing for the evening. It is ordinance 79214, it's amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.10C24 to allow wave ministries to provide space to conduct church services in a fellowship hall at 441 South Hurley Road, Whitehall, Ohio, 43213, property owned by Michael Redd and declaring an emergency. So at this time, I would ask for any proponents to come forward and tell us why you're in favor.
How you doing?
Good evening, council, good evening, mayor.
Also, congratulations to Jerry. I don't know you, but thank you, man, doing all your work, you done?
State of Maine.
Danny Ortiz, I'm the pastor at the Wave Ministry, so, um, we excited to be back in the city. I was in the city here before for eight years for Pastor Swagerty off Charisma Life. I was this youth pastor there about seven years ago. So I, I'm real, uh, familiar with the city of Whitehall, did a lot of stuff with the school there, and my wife graduated from the city of Whitehall in 1996, so, we just excited to come and serve alongside of you guys and just help the city, help the youth in the city. Our, um, our ministry is, uh, non-denominational, multi-cultural, but we more, uh, interested in, uh, really doing outreach programs. Uh, we did an outreach program here in Whitehall about two years ago where we served over 200 families and gave 200, uh, turkey dinners off Napoleon, and that's some of the kind of stuff that we do for the city. We're also gonna, uh, be working on doing some after-school programming, so, we are excited to be here. If you guys have any questions for me, go ahead and ask. I know if anybody had any question. No? All right, thank you.
Would anyone else like to come forward and speak in favor of ordinance 79214? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right, I'll close the public hearing on, uh, ordinance 79214, uh, now officially closed, we'll move to our verification of copies. Ms. Churchman, please call and roll, whether each member of council agrees with the copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda this evening prior, and listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any add-on legislation.
Bailey.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Kanter.
Yes.
LeCourt.
Yes.
All right. That brings us to our items for third reading, we'll begin with the one that's 74214, it's approving and making appropriation transfers in the total amount of $34,000 from various expense accounts to the general fund to the income tax refunds account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I would like to introduce ordinance 74214 and move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Ms. Coniston for the introduction and adoption of ordinance 74214, questions or comments? Ms. Churchman, please call and roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Kanter.
Yes.
LeCourt.
Yes.
Ordinance 74214 has been adopted, so that brings us to...
I'm sorry, did you intend to amend that ordinance?
That was amended on the 11th.
Okay, thanks for clarification.
Okay. You almost had it. I thought I missed out. Because I've done that. Now, this, this, it was, uh, that brings us to ordinance 79214. It's amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.10C24 to allow wave ministries to provide space to conduct church services in a fellowship hall at 441 South Hurley Road, Whitehall, Ohio, 43213, property owned by Michael Redd and declaring an emergency.
President, I would like to introduce ordinance 79214, move to its adoption.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Kanter, and a second by Mr. Gray for the adoption of ordinance 79214, questions or comments?
Uh, President Grant, uh, by trade, I'm a zoning attorney, and I was wondering if you can, we can condition this on Michael Redd returning to Ohio State to finish his three years.
As, as president of the council, I don't see how we can assert that. It is a good idea, but I'm not sure that we actually have that authority.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Or, or, at least that's my opinion. All right. Um, did anybody ask for it?
Yes.
All right, questions or comments? Again, because that's where I came from. All right, Ms. Churchman, please call and roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Kanter.
Yes.
LeCourt.
Yes.
Ordinance 79214 has been adopted. Welcome. Yes. That brings us to ordinance 80214, is the last item we have under, uh, third reading this evening, is to opt, it's ordinance 80214 to authorize a provision of certain tax exemptions within the Hamilton Road District Community Reinvestment Area for the purpose of encouraging economic development within the area and authorizing the execution of the related community investment area agreement.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to table ordinance 80214 to December 2, 2014. Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. LeCorte, and a second by Mr. Coniston to table, uh, ordinance 80214 to the December 2, 2014 meeting, questions or comments? Ms. Churchman, please call and roll.
Bailey.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Kanter.
Yes.
LeCourt.
Yes.
Ordinance 20, I'm, I'm sorry, ordinance 80214 has been tabled.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Excuse the indulgent, indulgence here, but, uh, before we leave third readings, I just, um, on 74, uh, catch 2014, uh, my notes reflect that that was amended from 34,000 However, what we have before this evening, the ordinance says $34,000 unless I'm... The ordinance doesn't say it's on the agenda. Uh, as, to the extent you read the, the agenda was read with the $34,000 amount, it probably should be reconsidered and state $58,000 or... Does our clerk agree?
It's, the original is correct. With the $58,000.
And the section is correct. Right.
It was amended by Mr. Miller in committee last week.
Oh, right. And so, just to make sure, let me redo this and we'll read with the correct amount.
I forgot to change it on the agenda.
Sure.
Uh, so let, now let me ask, would we have to rescind the previous vote? That that motion reconsidered?
Right.
Yeah, I, I would say a motion to reconsider by somebody on the prevailing side, which could be anybody.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. President, I'd like to motion to reconsider ordinance 74, 2014.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by, uh, Mr. Tanner to reconsider, uh, ordinance 74, 2014. Questions or comments? Ms. Churchman, please call the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
LeCourt?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, we have ordinance 74, 2014, uh, up for reconsideration. It is approving and making appropriation transfers in the amount of $58,000 from various expense accounts in the general fund to the income tax refunds account and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to thank the city attorney for bringing that to our attention. That's under questions and comments.
Cause I think we're all in the council.
So we have the ordinance 74, 2014, and move to adopt.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Coniston for the adoption of ordinance 74, 2014. Ms. Churchman, please call the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
LeCourt?
Yes.
Ordinance 74, 2014 has been adopted. That brings us to, those are all the items we had in the third reading. Under second reading, we have ordinance 81, 2014. It's amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, changing the zoning on property located 4801 East Broad Street from General Commerce District to exceptional use, property owned by Whitehall Assisted Living LLC and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being led by title only. It is also scheduled for a public hearing on December 2nd, 2014. That's the only item we had under second reading. That brings us to our first reading, ordinances and resolutions. We begin with ordinance 83, 2014. It's authorizing adoption of the 2000, of the November 2014 replacement pages to the codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 83, 2014, and move for suspension of all rules.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Tanner for the, uh, introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 83, 2014. Questions or comments? Ms. Churchman, please call the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
LeCourt?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 83, 2014. Move to adopt. Second. Motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Tanner for adoption of ordinance 84, 2013, 83, 2013. Ms. Churchman, please call the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
LeCourt?
Yes.
Ordinance 83, 2014 has been adopted. That brings us to ordinance 84, 2014. It's making and approving a fund transfer in the amount of $4,852 from the fiscal year 2011 JAG Grant Fund to the general fund and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by title only. Next, we have ordinance 85, 2014. Approving and making an appropriation transfer in the amount of $21,000 from the workers' compensation account to employee medical center account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 85, 2014, move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Gray for the introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 85, 2014. Questions or comments? Ms. Churchman, please call the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
LeCourt?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 85, 2014. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Gray for adoption of ordinance 85, 2014. Ms. Churchman, please call the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
LeCourt?
Yes.
Ordinance 85, 2014 has been adopted. That brings us to ordinance 86, 2014. It's making a and approving a supplemental appropriation of $95,806.84 from unappropriated money in the general fund to the self-funded health insurance account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to amend ordinance 86, 2014, and the amendment would be, uh, change the dollar amount to $108,933.83.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Gray to, uh, amend ordinance 86, 2014 striking the $95,806.84 dollar amount and inserting in its place the amount of $108,933.83. Questions or comments on the amendment? Ms. Churchman, please call the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
LeCourt?
Yes.
Ordinance 86, 2014 has been amended.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 86, 2014, and move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Gray for the introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 86, 2014. Questions or comments? Ms. Churchman, please call the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
LeCourt?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 86, 2014. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Gray for adoption of ordinance 86, 2014. Ms. Churchman, please call the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
LeCourt?
Yes.
Ordinance 86, 2014 has been adopted. That brings us to ordinance 87, 2014. It's approving and making appropriation tran, transfers from the workers' part salaries account to various general fund expense accounts in the total, in the total amount of $28,000 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 87, 2014, and move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by, uh, Mr. Gray for the introduction and suspension of all rules. On ordinance 87, 2014, questions or comments? Everybody happy here?
You happy with the ban?
Ms. Churchman, please call the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
LeCourt?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 87, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Gray for adoption of ordinance 87, 2014. Ms. Churchman, please call the hall.
Bailey?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
LeCourt?
Yes.
Ordinance 87, 2014 has been adopted. Uh, next we have ordinance 88, 2014. It's making an appropriation for certain special revenue, internal service and fiduciary, fiduciary accounts for the calendar year 2015 in the total sum of $9,405,558.3 and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by title only. Next, we have ordinance 89, 2014. Amending various sections of Chapter 135 of the Administrative Code and adding 135.23 lifecycle replacement fund and 135.24 economic development incentives fund and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by title only. Next, we have ordinance 90, 2014. Making appropriation for current general fund expense, expenses, street expenses and state highway materials expenses during the period from Jan. 41, 2015 to December 31, 2015 in a total sum of $28,117,000 and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by title only. Our last item for the evening is ordinance 91, 2014. It's amending section, sections 161.3 of codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, titled salary schedule. 135.14, titled tax auditor, part-time. 145.02, titled duties of the chief building inspector. 145.09, titled building inspector, full-time. And 131.02, titled director of information technology. And 161.37, titled table of authorized personnel. That ordinance is being read by title only. Those are all the items we had this evening. Under poll public, uh, if anyone would like to come forward at this time, your second opportunity and your last for this evening. Uh, to the justice council on anything, please step forward. All right, we'll move on to community day board.
Good evening, council.
I've got a couple of items.
Sure.
Um, just wanted to let you know that, uh, this coming Saturday, November 22nd, um, I, I had a woman call me and ask me to put this on the calendar, so I'll tell you about this. Um, there's a winter wonderland craft show going on at the, um, at the community park building from 9:00 to 3:00. And it is my understanding that, um, all money raised does go to nonprofit organizations. They actually touched base with the Pride of Whitehall to see, um, if there could be anything, but we talked to some specifics for next year. Um, Tuesday, December 2nd, right here, 6 o'clock, your next meeting. Uh, we will be having the holiday ladies ceremony out on the porch. So, uh, come for some music and some cheerleaders. Uh, Tuesday, December 9th, at 12:30 in the afternoon, um, the mayor is gonna be doing something a little different. We're gonna have a Facebook chat with the mayor. Um, as you, as you know, um, the mayor holds her, her meetup, uh, meetups a couple of times a year. And we thought we'd do something a little new and allow people who might be on their lunch breaks at work to have a chance to, um, to talk with the mayor too. So we're gonna do that. And then, uh, Saturday, December 13th, at 10:00 a.m. at Edner Road Elementary, it is Barbers with Santa and Shirecare. We'll talk about stuff.
Actually, the Barbers with Santa will be, um, 9:00 noon over at Edner Road Elementary and, um... Edner Road. We are gonna have, uh, wonderful libraries coming. They're gonna be reading some books to the children. So they're gonna be able to kind of relax and listen to some stories. Uh, I will be making my everything as pancakes again. I'm sure I will be covered in batter completely as permitted, as usual. Um, and the cheerleaders will be there. Go ahead, Edner House as well. Should be fun, fun time.
What cheerleaders?
No, we're having a lot of cheerleaders on the campus.
And that's when on day 12?
That's the 13th of late, Saturday.
What? What, what, what are you talking about?
Barbers with Santa?
Barbers with Santa is the 13th, Saturday, 13th.
I need some milk pancakes. So there's also, that's a nice little... Not putting sausages for us. No.
Is it related to the Red Hot Chili Peppers?
It really is?
Oh, yeah, that's a cool question.
Maybe they're so kind, let us use their kitchen and, uh, they actually have one of their cooks there to help us out cause they don't take with, uh, with the kitchen from... There is batter everywhere around here, so...
And I'll make the time change on the counter. So 9:00 noon now?
It's bigger, it's whole, not the whole, it's more...
It was, you know, we had some comps with the kitchen. Um, one year, so we tried it over at Edner Road and it worked out so well. We had a lot of people very happy with the location. We thought it was certainly located. So we actually had some more, um, people come out to it. So we just wanted to do this and do it.
It certainly looked...
Does he get a little brown?
Worked it.
No, it doesn't at all. It's really big, very sweet.
Thank you, anyone else? Anyone else have anything for poll public, uh, community day board? All right, we love the poll count. Well, glad you reminded me.
It's a reminder, it's a day after that.
Maybe it was the 27th or the 23rd.
Mark your calendars though, it's, yeah, it's, yes, it is Thanksgiving.
Bye, Jer. All right, now we'll move on to poll council. And we'll begin with Mr. Bailey.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Jerry, uh, thanks for all you do and have done. That resolution is an indication of how much your community really, uh, you know, respects. And, uh, I wish to express, you know, our gratitude. Everywhere I've been, I've seen you. I think I won't take less than you for, you know, bringing that to our attention. And it's very nice. Walking Way Ministries. Excited about that. Hope to attend. As soon as you're doing the services, I'd like to definitely show.
Thank you.
That's all I have. All right, that brings us to Mr. Gray.
Uh, I want to thank everyone for coming and congratulations, Jerry.
Oh, thank you all for coming and congratulations, Jerry. I just, I'm a lot of city, but just what you do is, you don't expect it, which makes it even better that you're on. And, uh, welcome back, guest of the night off.
Yes.
I've seen you before, so I remember you. I know you're seeing.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Thank you, President Graham. Walking away ministries.
Thank you.
Um, generally, bro. Jerry and I have known each other for quite some time, and actually, he, you know, I kind of say that I got into volunteerism because of you. Um, he was so good with my son when my son was young, and he took him aside and he taught him how to do bowling when nobody else thought, you know what, this neat kid, there's no way he's going to be bowling, and he worked really hard with them. And to take one individual child, and he did that with all of them, just took them all aside and worked with them. And, you know, I commended for that, it was something that I just wanted to do. And I remember you, and I think Joe Holden taught me into coaching one year, and they drew me a picture, and it was state people, and said, you know, this is, uh, here, here's your positions right here, and, uh, just put them right in that order. And, you know, I flipped the kids right in that order, and then they moved. He didn't tell you to move, I didn't know what to do after that, so, um, but really, that's how I got into, into volunteering. And, um, last year, I got him, I got him good. Um, we did our community picnic, and I asked him if he would, um, host a soccer game. And he was very, very serious about the whole thing, and he was, you know, outlining, marking everything and doing everything, and meanwhile, I had everybody else in on it. Um, we literally started the game out, coupled with the hokey pokey. Um, I think we did a lot of NCA on him. Uh, we, we really got him good, where he was going, I, I really didn't know what's even going on here. Um, and he came to me afterwards, and he said, in thirty-some years, nobody's ever got me this good. So, I said, if I'm done here, this is done, then. But congratulations, Jerry. Thank you more, Graham.
And President, Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome to Whitehall. I was actually in, in your church the other day, I walked through, your church is really close to my house. I was called, I talked to, a very developed director, very impressed the way I looked.
Thank you.
So, good luck, and welcome back. Jerry, we've had quite a ways, I mean, gosh, we lead T-ball, um, coached a lot of things, so. I'm hired to help start games a couple of times together, since they honor. I think I remember you most with the kids in your truck, with the T-ball bankers every year. It was always hot, and I always had water on the sides, but he always had his cannon going out of that fire truck. And all my kids, you know, I coached some good kids, and we always, of course, he'd come. And I always had the biggest balloons in my trunk. And when he pulled that truck out, he fired that cannon, and I'd take a bow there. Much deserved, congratulations. A lot of people don't realize that in soccer, he coached the high school team. He did work very well, and he took a lot of these kids, and took them step by step by step, and that's, that's a hell of a accomplishment. From a practical, thank you so much. That's all I have.
All right, I'd like to read to Mr. LeCourt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want you to know, I have kindergarten in your church.
You did?
I did, and that is the best, yeah, I got to my beach, I did not have kindergarten, so I had to go, and this is Dobbins. We've been on with Dobbins.
Called North Church Christ.
North Church Christ. And, uh, so I look forward to come to, I want you to go back in and see what you have in there for the year.
Absolutely.
At least I can see what you're doing. And the after-school program, you said that was going to be a possibility, so.
It's definitely going to be a possibility.
So, are you looking just for the, um, for anybody in Whitehall, or is this just focused on your church?
It's Whitehall. I mean, we, we here for the city of Whitehall, we're going to, you know, put up the same attitude, and then we're going to work with the kids here, so.
Good morning, our kids out, and a lot of people in my community.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, good luck to you on your new adventure here at Whitehall. What was your nice maiden name if you don't mind?
Boyd. Debbie Boyd.
Yeah, that's pretty neat, there. My sister-in-law graduated when I used to, because she was a sister, so, I mean, you love her. Jerry, thank you so much. I mean, Jerry, that Facebook is amazing, why are you doing this? There's so many other people that deserve this. And I think that's why it's just such a complimentary thing that we need to do this for you, because, you know, it's one thing when you, you know, leave in the rewards of a paycheck and stuff like that. But what do you do, Jerry? You just do it out of the goodness of your heart. And those are the type of people that I just have so much respect for. Um, but your dad, I mean, your mom, they're wonderful people, you guys are lifelong residents here. Your dad is still eighty, how old?
One.
Eighty-one, and I want everyone in here to know that he is still employed with our parking department, out there in freezing cold, making sure our parks are ready for our citizens. This family is amazing, and I hold on that I got to, and people want to rock that board and be it, so, um, so thank you very much, Jerry. Other than that, I'm just wishing you two a good season.
This is Jerry's mom, and she says she taught him everything you know.
Of course.
How does my kid say it? Just as a woman, the table. Anyway, she says you guys are a wonderful couple. I wish you your blessing to marry, to marriage in today's society, so. Wanted to let you guys know, we were playing with this in the freezing cold. I was so afraid you guys wouldn't come out. But anyways, I'm just wishing all our residents here a wonderful holiday season. We're kicking it off, we have snow, now it's Thanksgiving, and before you know it, we're all going to be burnt. So, thank you.
All right, well, I, I want to thank everyone for, uh, coming out this evening. It's a very cold night out there, so be careful when you walk out of the valley. Be careful when you walk into your house, don't slip. Stay warm. Come on back in two weeks. Ms. Churchman?
Yes.
Second.
All right. Soon as I have your, for the business speaking. I have a motion from Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Tanner for adjournment. Ms. Churchman, please call them all.
Bailey?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
LeCourt?
All right, we are adjourned, so our next meeting in two weeks.
How are we doing?
Good. Can you email me all those, uh, one of the one things that I have that's on?
I can add.
That I can have it.
I can try.
Show up to someone's court.
Yeah, we're due next day, 6 o'clock.
Jerry?
They're not.